Do we want to turn the light on in the back there, or no?
I don't know.
I think somebody probably hit the switch.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting, our regularly scheduled city council meeting. I do apologize for the tardiness. I was held against my will by the Girl Scouts. We were having a great discussion downstairs. A wonderful discussion. Extraordinarily interesting questions were asked, and I deflected every one of them. So it was perfect. We begin tonight's meeting with the roll call. I kindly ask our city clerk to take the roll.
Chuck Brown?
Here.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Martha Flanagan?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marks?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simonian?
Here.
John Singer?
Here.
We begin our city council meetings with the pledge of allegiance, and I have asked these young ladies with the Girl Scouts representing Heartland School, Harrison Middle School South, Middle School North, to please lead us in the pledge.
Turn that way, the flag's there. Girls, the flag is there.
Hey, don't look at the cameras, pretend they're not here.
(laughing). The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, well done.
Thank you.
Ladies, these are gonna come in handy. This is awesome. It's a good thing the Better Government Association's not here tonight from Channel 7.[127.11][127.11](laughing) We do thank you for the gifts. How was my slam to Channel 7? How was that? Was that good? We have a very distinguished gentleman and his family joining us this evening, folks. We are swearing in a new police officer, Dustin Haney. Where's Dustin?
Right here.
Dustin, what are you doing in the back, man?
The only seat open.
Come on up to the podium, big guy.
Okay.
Oh, God, he's a big guy.
(laughing).
Well, no, it's security, dude, back up. Take the podium? No, the... Chief, how long was the list?
(laughing).
I've got a cheat sheet here that's all about you, man.
I hope it's good.
Well, it says here you don't know where your mark is. I think I met your wife, Callie, earlier.
Good.
I don't know, and I met your son as well.
Correct.
Gavin, and you have a... Let's see, you have Maddox, age 18 months. Where's Maddox?
He's sleeping.
Well, that's what we usually do.
Right.
It's like, so he's not with us tonight?
Not with us tonight.
Oh, shucks. Let's see. Is your father Scott with us tonight?
He is.
Oh, where's Mr. Haney?
He's the other tall guy.
How are you, Mr. Haney?
I'm doing fine.
Awesome, welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Let's see, how about Chris and Colin? Are your siblings with us?
They're not here today. They had to work.
And what do they do?
Uh, one is a security count, works security, and Chris is a pilot.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Commercial pilot, or?
Commercial.
Commercial. Any... Can I deadhead it to Seattle on Friday by chance?
Uh, sure. Yeah.
We got it covered, Dean. Now, you make Elgin your home.
I do.
You do. You graduated from Western Illinois University in 2008.
That's correct.
With a degree in sociology and a minor in law enforcement.
That is correct.
Far out. Now, this next little moniker is called hobbies. According to this sheet, you like going to the gym.
I do.
Clearly.
Clearly.
Anything involving or playing the piano?
Uh...
Oh, sports, sorry. Sorry.
That's a sport.
Sport. What's your favorite sport?
I play volleyball.
You do?
I do.
Do you play competitively at Western?
I did.
No kidding? So you're a Leatherneck on the volleyball team?
That's correct.
And were you a... Don't... Outside hitter?
Right side.
Right side hitter. No kidding. What number did you wear?
Twenty-seven.
Why?
That was my high school number.
Ah, so you got to choose your college number? That's rare.
Right.
Wow. "I am a big White Sox fan," says Dustin. Smarj are gonna start for you?
He is. He's gonna be number one.
How do you know this?
Because Chris Sale's out.
Oh, is he out?
He is. He hurt his foot moving.
Well, that's typical baseball player.
That's right.
He hurt his foot moving?
Moving. I think he had a box drop on it.
Hmm. You're also a Bears fan.
Unfortunately.
What do you make of Cutler?
Oh.
Are these cameras off, by the way?
(laughing).
I love Jay Cutler.
Right.
Go ahead.
He's got a year left on his contract before he can get a new quarterback, so...
Oh. Let's hope he doesn't come to town, he gotta provide security detail.
Right. He'll get security.
What else should we know about you, Dustin?
Uh, I'm a family man. I like to spend time at home with the family. Um, I was a police officer for three years before this, so...
In what community were you a police officer?
Spring Grove.
Oh, yeah.
You know where it's at?
No.
I didn't think so.
It's down south?
No, up north.
Right, that's what I meant.
Right.
And you're proud to be part of Geneva's force?
Very proud.
And team?
Very proud.
And how was the interview process, man? Was that difficult?
Um, well, I had a couple interviews, so, um...
Did you walk right past the interview table and try to sit in like a...
I tried to sit right in the chief's chair, but he told me I couldn't do that, so...
Well, you've got an extraordinary dedicated staff you're gonna work with.
Absolutely.
Very good men and women. Great chief, great commanders. It's awesome, huh?
That's right.
So you always wanted to be a police officer growing up?
Since I was little.
When were you ever little?
Um, when I was like five or six, I think.
But you always wanted to be a police officer?
Right.
Why is that?
Um, I don't know. My dad was a fireman, so I saw him in the service industry, so I always wanted to serve and protect, so this is the path I chose.
Fantastic, man. Well, we're glad you chose Geneva as well.
Thank you.
Now, we have the pleasure of our city clerk to swear you into your position. If you would like your family to join you?
Sure.
The floor is yours, and this evening is yours, so...
Come on up.
I think Gavin's gonna be performing for us tonight.
Yes.
I commented on his outfit earlier, it's like, it's awesome, man. You're a better version of Justin Bieber, just let me say that for the record.
Why don't we come over here? Just line up in front of me. And as soon as we're done, I mean, we'll sign this. This is really all... Anyone else set?
All set.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Hi, Dustin Haney.
Hi, Dustin Haney.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer?
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
In the city of Geneva?
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane, afore said?
County of Kane, afore said.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of police officer?
The duties of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
(applause).
And you just hang here and then flip it over and on the other side.
So, Chief, it's okay if I can say congratulations, Officer Haney? It's now official?
It is, sir.
And, uh...
Very good, thank you much.
What's your first duties, officer?
Uh, reading.
Reading, well...
Awesome reading. Then there's writing.
(laughing) That's awesome, man. So what are you doing tonight to celebrate?
Uh, going to bed.
Going to bed?
Yeah.
Well, it's a real live one you got here, chief. This is... So you're not gonna be on the midnight shift, I take it?
No, that's right.
Well, we're proud to have you on board.
Thank you very much.
Oh.
It appears his son has a question.
Oh, you do? Gavin, you have a question?
(inaudible).
Are you gonna get Dairy Queen tonight? Why are you getting Dairy Queen tonight? Because it's free. It is, right?
Is it?
You get a free small vanilla cone for... Yeah. So, you know, it might strike you as interesting to bring some back. What do you say? Yeah, we got cookies.
All right. Well, if you're sure the cookie is, I'll get you some ice cream.
You can have mine, you're bigger than I am. There you go. Congratulations, officer.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Is anyone else warm?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, should we crack like about seventeen windows in here? Crack the one behind us, Mary? Holy mama. Girl Scouts, it's my pleasure to wel... What? It's my pleasure to welcome you formally to City Hall. This is very exciting. And I have a proclamation for you as well. Who is the official spokesperson for the Girl Scouts?
Ms. Wolf and...
And is this, uh... It's Ava, correct? So Ava, what's your last name, Ava?
Ava.
Ava it is. So Ms. Wolf and Ava, welcome. And you ladies are in eighth grade, correct?
Yes.
Is it north and south, or south and...
South, north.
South and north.
North, south.
Well, welcome to City Hall. So tell us about the Scouts, the Girl Scouts.
Um...
Well, we're the... Our troop is the oldest right now, and...
Really?
Yes.
How long has your troop been in existence?
Since second grade.
Yeah, second grade.
Second grade, yeah.
So you've been in the Girl Scouts throughout? Wow, that's pretty cool.
And I have started since kindergarten, and I... This is my ninth year as a Girl Scout.
It's like Officer Haney, he's got the... That's awesome. And Ava, how long have you been in the Scouts? Since second grade?
Yeah.
Is that right? So you guys are the leaders, really, of the Girl Scouts. I noticed the other young ladies were looking up to you and trying to take note of what to do, and... But they were great at asking questions, weren't they? It was awesome. And you brought cookies for the council?
Yes.
How did cookie sales go this year?
Good.
Yeah?
They went pretty good.
That's awesome. You know, Mr. Finson here, he wants to buy six boxes.
That's good, because we didn't sell as much this year, because some of the older girls are getting a boot, because, um, we're saying we're too old to sell cookies.
Oh, really?
And we're raised for our trips, yeah.
Oh, we're never too old to eat cookies, that's for sure. So what special things do you have coming up? There's gotta be some fun in scouting, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Um, we're gonna be finishing up our Silver Award at the end of this year. For our project, we are gonna be creating a video for spreading awareness on ovarian cancer and trying to promote it.
Very important.
And we, at the end of this year, are gonna be bridging to seniors as a Girl Scout.
Oh, really? Well, that's neat. Wow.
And once you reach Ambassador in your senior year of high school, you get scholarships at different colleges.
Right, and do you plan to stay in Girl Scout as long as they'll have you?
I think so.
Is that right? What's your ultimate accomplishment or goal?
Scholarship.
Scholarship?
I think my ultimate, like, goal, or to make it, is to be able to receive my gold award.
And the gold award, is that equivalent to what the Boy Scouts do for...
Eagle Scout, Kirk.
Eagle Scout? It is, okay. So you have to do a big project for the gold award?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And do you have to achieve that prior to a certain age?
Hmm, yeah.
High, grade, high school.
Oh, is that right? So before graduation of high school? Cool.
Mm-hmm.
Well, here's a project for you. Add an addition to City Hall. We'll provide the materials.
I'll work on it.
You'll work on it? That's awesome.
Mm-hmm.
We have a pretty cool proclamation for you. I would ask the city councils, if so proclaimed, if Alderman Marx makes the motion, the Cookie Monster himself, Alderman Singer, makes the second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I present this formally to all the Scouts and maybe get a picture? That'd be cool. Who's creating?
So much cooler than the police officers. Fall over here, ladies. You guys go up, too.
Do you mind? I shouldn't just grab them. I shouldn't just grab.
You can point out your city council members, or you can get a thousand dollars. Oh, God, never mind, strike that. Move here, ladies, stand next to me. Well, there you go. Let's face off again.
You guys turn around.
All right, girls.
There you go.
This is awesome.
Look, we're doing it.
I'll stand on the back. How about you ladies hold this?
Well...
Okay. Ready? Awesome. Thank you very much, ladies. Continued success and good luck, okay?
We're gonna stay from there.
Thanks for all the good you do.
Now, ladies, remember I told you downstairs about this really, you know, cool people who are here tonight? You gotta stick around and watch this next thing, okay? Start humbling, I'll tumble for you. Dr. Ginsburg, I auctioned off some services from your clinic last night at a fundraiser.
Sounds good.
It was cool. It went for eleven bucks. It was, uh...
(inaudible).
Four... Yeah, exactly. We have with us tonight the Geneva High School gymnastics team, and I've got certificates for all of the athletes, and a special gift for one young lady in particular. But if I could, I'd love to have the team members, and perhaps even the coach, join us at the podium and introduce themselves, because it's always fun to see these ladies live instead of watching on YouTube and at meets and what have you, so... Don't be shy, ladies, come on up. It's being televised, and your English teachers will be well aware of where you were tonight. I want you to say hello, introduce yourself, tell us what grade you're in, if you're a senior, what are your plans next year?
(inaudible).
Who's gonna go first?
The seniors?
I might tell them that's very easy.
Oh, yeah, share with us your specialty as well. Your specialty, is that the proper word, doc? Your discipline.
I'm Megan Beitzel, and I'm a senior, and my favorite events are vault and bars.
Vault and bars. You've got some good presence here, Megan, haven't you?
Yeah, maybe a little.
You have, it's been great.
Thank you.
Are your... Is your family here tonight?
Yeah, they're over there.
Where... Oh, there they are. I saw him earlier. So you're a senior?
Mm-hmm.
What are you gonna do next year?
Um, I'm either going to Carthage or St. Louis University to study occupational therapy.
Oh, no kidding? Do they have a doctorate at both?
Um, at St. Louis they do, but at Carthage they have like a dual degree program?
Yeah.
With Wash U.
Oh, they do? So you'll end up in St. Louis anyways?
Yeah.
So you're either a Billiken or up in Kenosha, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Are you leaning toward one or the other?
Um, kinda towards Carthage right now.
It's a beautiful campus, isn't it? It's gorgeous. Well, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Grace Ginsburg, I'm a senior.
Yep.
And I do all four events. I don't really have a favorite, though.
Now, for us who are untrained in the world of gymnastics, all four events equals the vault, the uneven bars, the floor, and the pummel. And the what?
Balance beam.
The pummel horse is not your gig.
That's men's.
And you are a senior?
Mm-hmm.
And what are your plans next year? Augustana?
No, I'm going to either University of Iowa or Miami, Ohio.
Oh, no kidding?
Oh.
University of Iowa has a great team. Wow.
Not for gymnastics, but...
Just to go to school and...
Yeah.
What do you hope to study?
Um, most likely nursing.
Is that right? Kind of following in the old man's footsteps there, kinda?
Yep.
What are you leaning toward? Iowa or...
Um, I think Miami.
Are you really?
Yeah.
My nephew, do you know my nephew, Pat Gaskaden?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, he goes to Miami.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. Well, welcome, Grace.
Thanks.
I'm Claire Ginsburg, and I'm a sophomore, and I also do all-around.
That's it, Claire?
Yeah.
Your name is Claire Rose.
No, that's just what Kim likes to call me.
Oh, I see. Coach Kim.
Yeah.
Well, you might be disappointed later, then. Okay. So a sophomore. Awesome. So you got two cool years left.
Um, I'm Julia Grotons, I'm a sophomore. I do beam, floor, and vault.
Does everyone know how wide the balance beam is? How wide is it, Mr. Singer? How wide is the balance beam in gymnastics?
Four inches.
It's not wide enough? It's, yeah, four inches, can you imagine?
Three or four inches.
That's wild. So the psychology of performing on such a narrow platform, how do you ever get over that?
Uh, lots of practice.
Lots of falling, lots of... Yeah. Any major injuries that you've had to recover from?
Um, none from beam.
That's awesome. Who's your favorite gymnast? Besides...
Sean Johnson.
Sean Johnson, really? Very cool.
Oh, I'm Paige Beitzel, and I'm a sophomore, and I did bars.
What's so funny about that, Paige?
(laughing).
Now, Paige, let me ask you a question. You've got some height to you as well.
Yeah.
Is that an advantage? Is it... Doesn't really matter?
Um, it's a little disadvantage for bars, but...
Is it?
Okay.
So how do you... Do you have to compensate for that, or... You really can't, though, can you? You can't, like, bend your knees and stuff, because you get points taken off, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
(laughing).
I feel like Bela Karolyi down in Houston, like...
Bella Lugosi.
Bella Lugosi.
Um, I'm Lily Chapman, I'm a freshman, and I did vault, bars, and floor.
Freshmen? How's it going so far? You look up to the upperclassmen?
Sure.
You at least do tonight?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
I'm Kelly Frank, and I'm a freshman, and my favorite event is the floor.
The floor. Now, here's what I did not realize, and maybe some of you don't, you know, you play basketball, you got forty minutes. You play baseball, it's usually two and a half hours. Football is, you know, good god forever. But the longest competition in gymnastics is ninety seconds. The floor, right? So you gotta put it all out there for ninety seconds, and that's it. There's no overtime, there's no do-overs, there's nothing. And how big is the floor, the mat?
Um...
Forty by forty.
Forty by forty.
Forty by forty?
Yeah.
Wow. Do you love that the floor exercise is the best?
Yes.
Yeah? That's pretty cool.
Um, I'm Hallie Fryell, I'm a freshman, and I like beam and bars.[1358.12]
The, which bars?
Beam and bars.
Oh, beam and bars?
Yeah.
That was a protein thing. The ladies don't do uneven bars, correct? Incorrect?
No, we do uneven bars.
You do?
Yeah.
So when you say bars, you're talking the uneven bars?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the synonym? Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Cool. Thanks for clarifying.
I'm Bailey Pyhara and I'm a freshman and my favorite event is beam.
Beam?
Yeah.
Why is that your favorite event?
I don't know.
Well, surely you must know, I mean, it's like, how long is the beam?
I don't know.
Sixteen feet.
Oh, it is sixteen feet and four inches wide? Do you guys want us to wait while you debate this? Yeah, quick, somebody Google this. Coach, how long is the beam? It is sixteen feet. Now, Coach, you gotta come up and, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, madam.
I'm Molly Lambalot and I do floor, or that's my favorite event. And I'm a freshman.
Any relation to Lamb...
She's my mom.
Okay. Is your mom here tonight?
No, my dad is.
Oh yeah? Where is he?
Right there.
Oh, there he is. He always looks different when I see him. Who else? Did we catch everybody? Coach?
Yes.
Come say hello.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Coach Hossman. I have been coaching for 15 years and we have an outstanding team this year.
What makes a team cohesive and fun to be with and all that good stuff?
Their work ethic. You know, if they have a good work ethic, then we can bring some fun into the program, but if they don't, then you have to focus on everything you're doing the whole time. So, just a good young team, but really focused and really committed to the program.
Now, who said their favorite gymnast was Sean Johnson? Sean Johnson's quoted as saying that gymnastics taught her all of life's most important lessons: discipline, respect, stick-to-itiveness and all that good stuff. Do you find that to be true as well?
Absolutely, yes.
Now, were you a competitive gymnast as well?
Yes.
And where did you compete?
I competed for high school and at NIU.
Oh, no kidding? Very cool. Now, where do you guys train besides, I'm assuming at the gym or do you go elsewhere as well?
We could train at our high school gym and then we supplement it with, we go to a club where there's a pit occasionally.
Which club is that? Is that the?
In Prairie Gymnastics.
Oh, okay. Wow. So, who are you rooting for for 2016 to be on the team? Anyone, any outliers that we haven't heard of yet in the gymnastics world?
Well, we have a very big team this year. Generally, I take about six or seven. So, we're gonna lose two of our seniors, which is gonna be disappointing, but I feel like we have a lot of depth, so I'm not looking to add anybody unless we have some good talent coming in, so.
Awesome. Well, ladies, if you don't object, and Coach, if you could assist me, that'd be awesome. Let me just cartwheel over there.
Yeah, you should've come over to the dais.
Would you like to see one of those fairways? Yeah? Ever seen a broken hip fly off? These are from all the athletes. You don't object if I call you athletes, correct?
No.
Because you are. Okay, excellent. Claire Rose Ginsburg. Grace, you know, I have a daughter, Grace, and today I party with a lady named Grace who just turned 100 years old. Molly, where's Molly? Way back here. What's that say, Kelly? Kelly Frank. All right, Kelly? I know you'll cherish that for an hour. Lily. Where's Lily? There she is. What, okay, hold on. I didn't even see, what happened to the arm?
She's okay.
In gymnastics? Really? How? Coming down?
No, I fell off bars.
You fell off the bars?
Well, I keeled, you're not gonna understand.
Try me. So, it was an accident?
Yeah.
So you fell on the elbow?
No, I like tried to save my fall and I like...
You dislocated it?
Yeah.
So there's no pins or anything in there? So you'll be okay in a few weeks?
Yeah.
Don't try to explain that because I went to two high schools, I wouldn't understand. Paige.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Julia. If I've misspelled any names or anything, let me know, okay, because I'll get back to the coach in a year.
No, you, no, no, apologize at all, I'm serious. It's your game.
Holly. Boy, Holly. It's shorts weather, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's almost gonna be 40 for God's sake. And Megan Beitzel. Now, you have older brother, right?
Oh, he's my cousin.
Oh, that's your cousin?
Yeah.
And Coach, this is for you. Now ladies, stick around, I've got a special gift for a special young lady whose middle name is Rose. May I have assistance?
May I have assistance?
Someone, can someone assist? Claire Rose, is Rose a family name?
So.
Do you know where your parents are, are they in the first row?
Yes, it is.
Do you know I went to school with her on the day? Isn't that wild? Get this thing out of the way, too. I have a special request from Dr. Ginsburg. And Dr. Ginsburg, we're gonna honor that request. So, Claire, you gotta join me. Now, on account of 40, in honor of Claire's state championship all around in 2014, we'd like to present this to you. It will be displayed in the city of Geneva on a very quiet dead-end photo side. Okay? This is in recognition of your extraordinary achievement. A special request in the area was near the corner of Pusher and 38, right near the law. So every time you drive to work, you can see it?
That's right.
Does that seem fair to you?
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Take photos if you need, what the heck, man, that's cool. We were pulling for you to have the... Team came in second place this year, folks, to state, pretty impressive.
Can we do one with all the girls?
Come on, girls, yeah. Put it in the middle, yeah. Coach, too. Oh, come on, Coach. Coach. Now, we'll take it. Thank you. Free dairy bean ladies, you guys love to eat that stuff? Let's talk about our fun times at Ohio, up on Brady Street. After the... Item 3D, ladies and gentlemen, is to proclaim March as Ethics Awareness Month in the city of Geneva. I'll entertain a motion to do exactly that. So moved. Motion by Marx, seconded by Cummings. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Wonderful, thank you.
Hey.
Hey?
You have to have ethics, right?
Item 4, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be considered and acted upon with one motion. So moved. Alderman Bruno makes the motion, Alderman Marx makes the second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Item 5 passes unanimously. We skip down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills that are presented in aggregate.
Bills per pay, for payment, total $3,132,688.86.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual invoices that add to that total can be found in the packet for tonight's meeting on the city's website.
Second.
Alderman Brown makes the motion to pay the bills as presented and available in our packets and on the city's website, and that motion is seconded by Alderman Flanagan. Any questions or comments regarding the bills presented? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Item 10 passes unanimously. We skip down to committee of the whole items of business. Item 11A is to recommend resolution number 2015-18, adopting the city of Geneva's coyote management plan. So moved.
Second. It was a motion by Maladra, was it?
Cummings.
Cummings, excuse me, and seconded by Marx. This matter's on the floor for discussion. Is there any questions from anyone in the dais? Alderman Kilburg?
I had a question. I believe, I wasn't able to find in the documentation from last week, we're making a $500 donation to the Humane Society of the United States, or is that considered to be a payment?
It's actually a payment for their travel expenses.
Okay, I thought that was, they were looking for a, I thought...
I called it a donation, but it's actually in exchange for their travel expenses, for coming out for the training.
Okay. Because, you know, I would think that if we made a donation, then that would be an endorsement of HSUS and I would have a problem with that.
We're making a payment to them, whatever you want to call it, for $500.
For travel expense, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? From the audience? I believe the city administrator is gonna offer some comments that will help clarify some of the information that was shared recently. This will be of great benefit to our guests in the audience tonight as well. City Administrator McKittrick, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out to everyone that if you're looking at the packet, on page 47, under the hazing section, you'll see that the text for number four and number five, projectiles and aggressive hazing, that is in red text, that's because that's changed from last week. There was a suggestion as an example to, for our police department to have the ability to use paintball guns, bear spray, and copper pellets for overly aggressive behavior of the coyotes. That was, again, intended as suggestions that trained professionals may use. Because there was some confusion about that being available to the public or the city encouraging the public, that text has been removed. So you will see under projectiles, only throwing objects such as rocks or golf balls in the vicinity of the coyote is listed. Also, if you look further on, starting on page 49, under the coyote management plan, you'll see some red text on pages 50. And I believe that's it. Those are the changes from last week. It's substantially the same as it was last week, but we tried to make some clarification, particularly as I just mentioned.
Are those, the red text on 49 is also deleted?
The red text is changed from last week. That's the change from last...
First red text is deleted, the second is just a change.
It's all changed. On page 47, the hazing projectile, that's changed from last week.
What you're saying, though, is is the red text will be added as it's presented here.
Correct.
Anyone from the dais? Clarifying questions, Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to entertain with the council to see if we can put some kind of a date certain on this, to revisit this at some point in time, and see how this approach is going, get some kind of reporting back. Because I have a feeling if we don't do that, it's going to, we're gonna revisit it five years from now or whatever, when it becomes a groundswell of folks coming to the meetings, like it's happened now, from what I understand. It was five years ago when we had some education and it's come to this. So, I'd like to entertain that, see what the council thinks.
If you'd like to suggest a time period, you can do so just through an amendment, if you'd like.
I'd like to say maybe a year from now, revisit this.
Amendment offered?
Yeah, to amend this along with adding that a year from now we revisit...
So a censure clause to review the efficacy of this plan?
Right.
In one year's time hence, seconded by Alderman Maladra. The amendment's on the floor, ladies and gentlemen. Any additional comments or questions regarding the amendment? Alderman Brown?
I would assume that any policy that the city passes, any advisory plan like this is subject to be brought up by any alderman at any time, so it's not actually clear. But as a reminder to the city council, I guess I'll vote for it. But I'm certainly under the opinion that any policy or any document like this, a plan, can be brought up at any time by any alderman. If there are two other aldermen in agreement, they can actually then approach the mayor and put it on the agenda.
Sure. But this codifies the fact that it'll return to us in a year with additional data from our friends in the police department and elsewhere, so...
Thank you, I will vote for it.
Anyone else? Alderman Flanagan?
I just have a question. Is the, is the, how long will the material stay on the website? So, the material that we have and the plan, it will stand indefinitely, correct?
Yes.
Are you talking about this plan or other?
Right, this particular plan.
Until it changes?
Okay.
And then any updates would be put on there?
Super, thank you.
Anyone from the audience? From the dais? On the amendment, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Before we adjourn to closed session to review minutes, we'll entertain new business. Is there any new business from anyone in the audience this evening? Or questions or comments or, oops, did I miss something? Oh, excuse me. Oh, forgive me, folks, 12A. Recommend resolution number 2015-19 urging the governor and general assembly to protect full funding of local government distributive fund revenues.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sino, seconded by Alderman Flanagan. Questions, comments, iterations, edifications? This will be a long battle, to say the least, and it's obviously critical that we share a common voice not only throughout the Metro West, which represents 750,000 citizens, but throughout the state of Illinois. So, it'll be some heavy lifting, to say the least. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now, new business. Anyone from the audience? Any new business or questions or... From the dais? Tomorrow, I wish the boys' basketball team good luck in the super sectionals. With that, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purposes described on the agenda. So moved. Seconded by Bruno, seconded by Singer. Roll call vote is necessary. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will be returning to open session to release certain closed session minutes, and we should be returning, I assume, shortly. The motion to return to open sessions in order?
So moved.
Flanagan makes the motion?
Second.
And Sino makes the second?
Second.
Voice vote insufficient. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We're back in open session and we'll entertain a motion regarding the matter discussed in closed session. And that motion should be to release, I thought you guys had this all worked out.
It's just these two, right? Okay, I got it.
To release of, the release of certain, you got it, okay.
Sorry. I was learning how to log in with that on-screen keyboard, so I got, I got distracted. Mr. Mayor, I move that we release partial release of May 12, closed session minutes regarding litigation, a full release of the closed session minutes from September 2nd, 2014, which itself was a review of closed session minutes.
Motion offered by Maladra, seconded by Alderman Sino. Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anything else, new business? Alderman Flanagan?
I just wanted to wish Ron Singer a happy birthday. It's his birthday coming up this week.
Oh, I couldn't have guessed. Wow, again? Seems like they come every year.
Dean has a birthday coming up.
Oh!
Is Dean's before yours? I know Dean's is Wednesdays, but...
When is your birthday?
Don't know.
Let's cut him in half and count the wings.
All I can say is gonna get easier for me to dispute my age.
That's right. Gentlemen, you're here virtually every week. You are especially. Any questions, comments for us? Now, you're a senior, correct? Unusual, isn't it? You have nothing better to do than hang out here on a Monday night, man? That's awesome. A motion to adjourn's in order. So moved. Motion by Simonian, seconded by Marx. All in favor, say aye. Aye. The meeting is adjourned.